All right, call the meeting to order, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of members.
Trusty Trombley.
Yeah.
Trusty Malinsky.
Here.
Trusty Connor.
Here.
Trusty Herzog.
Here.
Mayor McLeod.
Here.
Approval of the minutes, we approved the May eighth ones already, so may I have a motion to approve the May twenty-fifth minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Obstained, one abstention. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May thirty-first meeting?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, and general question period from members of the community. We have members of the community. Welcome.
So, I guess our question just would be that Nikki, would you be in touch with us when you have the paint and when you are ready for it? And I assume we need to pile your paint on top or it's just gonna wash away?
Yes, we need to.
Yeah.
We need to clear it for sure, yeah.
I gotta talk to some kids and see if I can get some more because it's a lot for a holiday to do by yourself, especially with like the winters and stuff too. Are you sure I can get some more to come down, make the little day?
I'm telling you, you tell the cones and they will be there.
Oh yeah, they'll be there.
Oh yeah, I'll bring all of them.
Yeah. Bring them all.
Yes, yes, bring them all, yeah. So I did spray paint the, well, a friend of ours sprayed painted the tops of the stumps because it's very porous, so I was thinking that the paint wouldn't either stick or it would just not look right. I might have to go over it again because that spray paint is not the color we thought it would.
Oh, what color was it?
It's supposed to be copper, but it looks silver. So it's, and we put, she put four on, I put two more cones on after, so it's really seeing it.
Oh. Oh my goodness.
This was on Saturday, remember?
Saturday, yeah, yeah.
It's lovely.
I know, so, yeah, well, I haven't been back to just check it, but I was thinking if you had some kind of a base coat on there to paint on top of, that it would sit better.
Yeah.
Yeah, anytime, anytime you and whoever is helping is available, who can do that.
They're down, they're down at school tomorrow.
That's right. Hello. I do have listed every Saturday at ten that I would be down there, pretty much every Saturday except for July first. So anytime, I'll be there, no matter what.
Yeah, maybe you could just join in on one of the days that she's posted that she's working on it, and I've been going too, so. I will camp this Saturday, but.
I'll be there Saturday, if that's something you could do.
And we talked about following Saturday getting together anyway, so maybe we could tie that in.
I have paints.
Yeah. Yeah, for me to go with your guys this summer.
Yeah, but Saturday after, well, Saturday after would be different.
We're talking about the stuffs.
Oh, okay.
Saturday afternoon would be different.
Do you know what time Saturday, this Saturday?
Ten.
Okay.
Although, I mean, they could do it on their own.
Yeah, you could always do it on your own, for sure, yeah, I mean, I have plenty of the colored paints. I just need to get the clear, the clear coat.
You guys have to decide, are you thinking maybe like a flower and a sun, maybe a moon and stars?
Yeah. Not your, not your, you're free to do whatever.
Or Four Seasons, or this is four.
That's a good idea, yeah, there are four seasons, good idea.
Mm-hmm.
That would be nice, because it's a sensory garden, so something, yeah.
Maybe if you don't believe like a fall leaf on one and a sun on and some things.
What's that gonna do?
It is a good idea, yeah.
Actually, they should be through itself like, same one with one as up. Because you have two seasons, right?
Yeah. So, yeah, I'll work with your schedule too. Yeah, that's fine.
Then the next question you were talking about, you had recommended that we contact the
Town.
The town.
I mean, it is tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
It's tomorrow, but he wanted to know all about what fundraising they're doing, and I don't think he understands that as youth liaisons, they come up with ideas, not fundraising.
Right.
Right, not the fu, not the funding for it, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's what the petition is, the petition was to get funding.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So do you go to that meeting as well, or?
No, but I certainly can talk to the supervisor and explain, although I think he does, he knows what you do anyway. But, yeah, so did you speak with him already?
I have not been there.
I, I called him.
You did, okay.
And then he told me when the next meeting was, and then he was asking me questions about whether to do the conventions, do you know how much it's gonna cost, how are they doing the fundraising, how, and I was just like, the questions were not what I was prepared for.
Right.
Right.
Um.
Okay. I would say go to the meeting though if you can tomorrow and just present what you've been doing and that petition and that you're looking to advance that idea and
Yes, yes.
see what kind of funding we can all work on together. You know, help that the county health department might have some money. We, we all work closely together, so.
So does he have a copy of the petition? Do you want me to, I, I made a copy, I can bring a copy.
Yeah, you should bring one then, you should bring copies if you have.
I phoned a copy to the board, I, I know how it is in the real world and things just sometimes just disappear.
Yeah. Yes.
You know, get put, yeah, and then did you do the pile and?
Yeah. Yeah. I don't even know if you have to have copies of that, that, I mean, you have the information that it was signed by many people, there's definitely interest in that community.
Hello. Hi, Brenda.
Yeah.
Um, anything else?
Are, are you comfortable going tomorrow to that?
I have, we were planning on going.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah, as soon as there, it's just like this meeting where
It's just like this, yes.
So there's just a community at the beginning and then south, right, that's right.
Yeah. Mm-hmm, there's a public parade at the beginning and then you don't have to stay for the rest.
Okay.
Their meeting starts at seven.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, and they'll be very, very interested in, you know, what you're proposing, so it's a good point.
Um, anything, like also going on this month, like in the season, and before the drive's coming up, so I don't know if there's anything village kind of ready for that?
Mainly Russell's, we support the Russell's Point programs.
Yeah, I am holding our first fun run of the summer at their Kids' Day activities, and I am looking for volunteers.
I'll absolutely volunteer there.
Uh, so that's Saturday, July first, and I will probably be there about eight o'clock in the morning, the run starts at nine, so, yeah.
From the elementary school?
Um, at the rec center.
At the rec center.
Yeah, it's behind the rec.
Okay, all right, well, I appreciate you calling me, letting me help out and our creation, this is a happy.
I know that the Boy Scouts are gonna be running, we were asked to help with the bounce house.
Yes.
So we, because we had two scouts, um, their father was relocated, their home is very, it's a new boss. We lost two scouts just recently when we went to Texas, so we don't have a lot of scouts, but we did make the commitment to do the bounce house at the very minimum Friday night from six to ten. So at least we'll get Sat, you know, Sat, Friday night, that first night, we will run the bounce house.
Well, any students that you could get to volunteer for the fun run would be super.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, anyone.
Is it like just for elementary school students, like, is like an age?
We have, um, any age, I think our fun runs are up to age sixteen because usually by then they're not out running for fun.
Well, our distances are usually a little short for.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's like up to a mile. It's not, but anyone's welcome to run, for sure, any students.
Is it a color run or just a fun run?
Just a fun run, yeah.
We do a series of fun runs here in the village every summer, every other Sunday, so this is gonna be our first one.
Yeah.
And then we'll go back to having them on Bill Earl Park.
The theme of the festivities is Mardi Gras, so the end, they'll come through the finish line through like streamers and receive their beads, so, something fun, yeah.
That'll be fun.
And where should they meet you?
Um, I will be just past the playground. So if we're going around, around, yeah, the, the run will be around the soccer fields and baseball fields, so we're back there a bit.
Down at the soccer field, uh? So you want, then there like eight, eight-thirty?
Yeah.
Oh, you're great.
Yeah, and then we can man stations around and. Yeah.
We got it, awesome.
That'd be awesome. Yeah.
We can get out and look at your, your pavement, we'll clear something up.
Yeah, I'm sure I can probably say something with that.
Okay.
It was the Fourth of July weekend, so.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all we have.
Oh, that's a lot.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we'll be in touch and we'll figure out what time to do together. Okay, perfect, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening everyone.
Uh, next is the report from the Code Enforcement Officer.
He has been.
Busy.
Very busy.
I was glad to see there's something on here about the elementary school.
Yeah.
Because I was actually approached by someone today about that.
Yeah.
And now that we've had a little bit of rain, I mean, that grass is well over foot tall.
It could be a couple of paves, I guess.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Your old school?
And, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I said he's gonna be, you know.
I was there for eight, it's pretty tall.
But the only problem is there's been no response.
Yeah.
Right, so, I I don't even know Holmes property anymore because it's changed hands so many times.
Well, no, this guy's owned it for pretty quite a while now, I thought it had sold and I think he thought it had sold, but
And then, and then that's when he stopped, and I think.
I'm not sure that it did.
That's right, the, um, yes, um.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, now I remember that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but the funny thing is, is that the person that said something to me is not a person that lives in the village, who just happened to be going through the village and went, oh my god, that place looks horrible.
It was so horrible, and it was kept up so well for years.
It was, it really was.
Well, I'll try to reach him too, maybe he'll respond to me, I've spoken with him before.
I don't know, I don't know what's going on there.
So Chris tries to verbally get in touch with them first and then sends out letters?
Yeah.
So I got a feeling that we're to the point of
Certified, certified letters.
That's so sad.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments on this? Here's my report. Welcome to the June twenty-twenty-three Board of Trustees meeting. We've had, we have a busy summer ahead of us, the wastewater plant disinfection upgrades are well underway. Bids are going out soon for the water line replacement project. This targets the major problem areas in the village, much of Route Nine, South Street, section of Elm Street. Hopefully, construction will begin in late summer. In addition, paving will begin in early July. Several roads will be paved and work has already begun to get them ready. Striping will also be done later in the season. The community garden still has several plots available to anyone who would like to plant some vegetables or flowers. Stop by anytime to claim a spot. It's also a great activity for children to learn about plants and healthy food. In addition, we have started planting the sensory garden. This will be a wonderful place to experience the five senses in a beautiful setting. We have four concerts scheduled for the summer. Details will be posted on our website and our Facebook page, there's already a nice flyer that Nikki put together. There will be food trucks at all the concerts, so plan on eating while you enjoy some fantastic music along the shores of the great Shaysi River. Be sure to save the date of September twenty-third for the celebration of the one hundred and fiftieth birthday of the Village of Champlain. There will be vendors and agencies available, kids' activities, a history program, a cornhole tournament, music and food for sale. The details will be announced later in the summer. Finally, I wish you all a beautiful start to the summer, I hope to see you out and about enjoying the warm weather with your families and neighbors, thank you. Reports from the trustees, Joel?
Uh, yeah, so, um, working on starting up the cornhole stuff, uh, we'll decide how we want to proceed on getting the hardware for the cornhole event. We'll try and gauge the interest, my mind is try and set up like registration beforehand on Facebook and stuff like that, and then also just when you show up as needed, so we'll see what the demand is, if we have a lot of people, I think, um, having teams, so a team need two, and then playing that way. Um, if there aren't enough people to be able to do that, then we'll split it up into just singles, um, or a mix of both, but I think we'll gauge, um, I think we'll post the signups like two months or maybe a month in advance, see how many we get there, and then kind of play it by year as to how we want to split things up. Um, I think we'll maybe do some prizes for the winners and
Sure.
best team, and I think we'll try and do all ages, my imagination, you know, just get everybody involved, so whoever wants to play, any cornhole pros out there, come test your skills and we'd love to have you. That's it.
We can have a board team. Thanks, Joel. Uh, Chuck?
Well, first of all, as Janet mentioned, the community garden, there is several spots available and it'd be nice to have that garden filled instead of just going to weeds. There are some gardens planted already and we'd like to see that again filled. Uh, as far as the birthday celebration, uh, the Knights of Columbus will be having food available, hot dogs, hamburgers for sale, and any profits will be going towards the playground fund, which would be nice. And also, a list has been generated with names of area businesses and organizations, community people, uh, that would maybe want to attend the event, and so that list completed, the letter, Janet's gonna be doing the letter, so it could be sent out in early July, which would be nice. So, uh, things are going pretty well with that, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Nikki?
Okay, as Janet said, the sensory garden is coming along slowly, but it looks good, and once we have all the flowers in there, they're really nice. Um, so I am meeting every Saturday at ten AM and anyone, children and families are welcome to come down. Um, a lot of it is just getting the area ready for keeping it clean and water and weeded. Um, this past weekend I had a family come help move another log over, uh, and planted wildflowers and sunflowers in another plot, so there is another plot that has some seeds in it.
How good.
Um, next weekend I need to get the sunflower seeds in the ground. And hopefully we can get the volunteer of teens to come down and do some painting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I did order a sign that says a, uh, what's it?
It's really cute.
The rock garden, yeah, a little rock garden sign that said leave one, take one, something like that.
Oh, cool.
But it's really colorful, so I need to get a pole to put it on and we'll set it aside a little area to make the painted rock garden. Um, and I don't know if you've seen online, there's a snake, rock snake going around.
That's what I do, I love that, true.
Oh, yeah, I thought I did.
Yeah, and a couple of people have sent it to me as an idea, so maybe we can do something like that too.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, uh, what was it saying? Oh, Saturday, July first is our fun run, our first fun run, and it will be held at the rec center in Russell's Point to kick off Kids' Day for the July fourth festivities. So, um, the run starts at nine and registration is open at eight-thirty, so I'm looking forward to seeing a larger group come down and participate and hopefully they'll join us the rest of the summer to finish off our series. That's all I have so far.
That's a lot.
But I still feel good.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for all your work on that. Kim?
Just still working on the water board and then, um, the other, the other issue is the personal policy, which we'll talk about in the role business.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Report from the clerk treasurer?
Um, we had a water and sewer billing, which was for two months, um, to go with our new billing cycle. Um, water was forty-four thousand, five fifty-five thirty-four, and sewer was forty-one thousand, five sixty-eight twenty-two.
Okay, any, any questions on the billing? Were there very many comments in terms of?
Um, well, some people asked, but, you know, nobody reads the letter.
Yeah, a lot of people didn't read the letter, kind of, so, so they were confused why it's two months.
Yeah, so, you know.
Well, people obviously are paying attention to that, because they noticed that it was different based on it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, needed to explain to them.
One comment was, oh, did we get a deal? That's why we didn't get a deal.
Right?
Yeah.
It was, it was nice to see that.
But, yeah, but once you explained it, they, you know, people understood.
Okay. Uh, presentation of the warrant?
Um, we have additional invoices for the warrant, uh, fifteen thousand, one eighty-one fifty-two for a total warrant of twenty-eight thousand, one forty-six thirty-five.
I have a, a motion to approve the warrant.
So move.
With the additional invoices. Sorry, go ahead, say it again.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, pick one of us.
Oh wait, did I read that wrong? The additional invoice, did I read twelve thousand, nine sixty-four eighty-three?
No, no.
I read it the other way around.
You said fifteen.
The additional invoices were twelve thousand, nine sixty-four eighty-three, but the
Oh, yes, you did, yeah. The total's the same.
The total is the same.
The total is, yes, the total is.
I'm like, wait a minute, this is wrong.
Yeah, you said the total correctly.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, any discussion or questions? No one has any comments or questions? All right, roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye.
Um, we just, we have a couple of invoices that, uh, more than two invoices that need to be approved, um, for the water, uh, for the project cost. So the invoice for the water line replacement is six hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then we have three invoices to be paid for the wastewater treatment disinfectant, um, for five hundred and seventy-six thousand, fifty-nine dollars and seven cents.
Let's, let's do them separately, so may I have a motion for the, um, water line replacement?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. And may I have a, a motion for the wastewater disinfection improvements, so. Is there a second? Second. It was one of you two.
I can do it.
Uh, any question on that? All right, roll call.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Okay.
Oh, everyone has their near-end reports to the May. Didn't have a lot of rollover, it's pretty close.
Which is the way it's supposed to be, right?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe, maybe we cut it a little close, but any recommendations or surprises or anything in the way you look at it one either?
Um, no, but we, we just bought more stuff that at the end that we really needed and won't put a string on this year's budget.
Yeah. Which is, I think, the smart thing to do.
Yeah. But Tom will be glad because he did spend some money.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so in five minutes we're going down to the, the Zoom thing, but we can, um, proceed here a little bit more. Um, report from the superintendent. Uh, he did leave his report. Spent a lot of work at the water plant, as you all know. And a lot of work at the sewer plant, of course. And then they've been very, very busy in the streets getting ready for the paving.
I have a question, so under his miscellaneous, and I've, I've noticed this myself, because I'm all of the village.
Yes. Yeah.
Um, the brush, is there any way that we can get in touch with people that still have stuff out to let them know that it's not going to be picked up so it doesn't sit there? With paving equipment going through and, and mowing season, is there any way to get in touch with these people to say you have to dispose of it?
We could call them. Um, I wouldn't want to put a
I need to know who they are.
Yeah, yeah, like, I guess you'd have to, if you know someone, if any of you see that and you want to let the office know, I don't want to put a lot of stress on them to make phone calls, but.
Well, if you have brush outside, it's not gonna be picked up right now.
I mean, we can put, we can put that notice out on our, on our pages.
Well, yeah, even if we could do something like that, because some of the stuff has been sitting out there for a while.
Most of the ones that I saw have been picked up.
Yeah, and, and, and they have been picking up even way past the dates that they were like, stuff.
Well, I've seen some where stuff is bagged, which we said we weren't picking up anymore, so.
Yeah, I said, but, no, it's not being picked up.
Yeah, so.
Let's, no, Kim.
Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, let, let them know and then let's put it on the Facebook page or, and the website.
Again, about, anything that's bagged is not going to be picked up.
The, the pickup season has now ended.
It's not an ongoing process.
No, no, although I did see them pick some up today. I mean, I think it was just there and
For the scene, yeah.
Yeah.
I do need to thank them for picking it up at the library.
Yeah, yeah. What's that?
I do need to thank them for picking it up at the library.
Oh, yeah.
Stuff's outside coming down at times.
I'm going to try to join this here right now, so this is the, the New York class. Uh, and I think, let's see if it works. There's a cross. So it's just loading? If not, I guess I'm going to go to my phone. Continue. You can all like gather around. Please allow let Microsoft Teams use your mic and, oh. So.
Allow.
Allow, oh, there it is. I have to get in the laptop. Meeting.
Enter the even.
Enter name. Do you want to move in a little bit so she can see more of this meeting? Hi, Lynn. Oh, she's got her camera on. Does she know I'm here?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
You can't. Uh, says the microphone's on.
I can't hear you at all, are you muted?
Nope. Nope.
Can you see me?
No.
Oh, my.
I can go to my phone, might work there. Or I can get some, she can't hear me.
I'm gonna try this again.
Oh, well, she wrote it off. Oh, okay.
She's a lot of work in. Yeah, you're not muted.
No.
You allowed it, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
How about now?
Oh, there you are. Can you hear me? Oh.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
I can't hear you.
You can't hear us. Okay.
And your mute button's not pushed.
No, no.
We can try again.
We could try it, yeah.
I wonder if I should just try it on my phone.
I can see you, but I can't hear you.
Okay. Um, what's this gonna double log me in or something, though?
Like, can you do it twice on two different devices at the same time?
I don't know. Am I just, is, is this hang up? Okay, let's try it here. Send it to you.
Yeah.
Oops. Oh, it's gonna make me download Microsoft Teams. Does anyone have that?
I do.
Oh, you do?
My phone's dead.
I have it on my laptop. I don't have that.
You want to try it again?
I have that.
I can see you.
Okay.
I can't hear anything.
Why is it, is it still? Unmute, it won't work?
Janet, what if you do it on your desk, on your desktop?
On your sound settings.
You can try it. You wanna un. Let me, uh, let me try.
I thought you had it on your laptop.
Because you do Teams, you've done Teams a lot.
Yeah. Why is it not coming up? Like, jeez, it's just so slow.
According to what I'm seeing, it looks like you're muted.
Okay, I'm gonna try it here. I'm gonna try it. Is that working? Setting up my phone.
Now I can't find the invitation here.
If she talks, we could just listen.
Yeah. Let me see if I can, um.
There's a chat we could type that into.
Yeah, it's just gonna say, can we chat?
So, it's not working?
No, I think we can figure it out.
So, let me just. Whoops.
Click the letter.
Okay. Is there a chat in?
Yeah, right there. Just type.
We're, oh, right there. Did she get it?
Yep.
Don't you just love technology? I've got a little icon that shows you're muted.
I mean, it does look like it, but I.
Yeah, you can't find, you can't figure it out in seconds. And she doesn't have that med that you can push to make it.
Teams couldn't unmute. Try unmuting your microphone.
Yeah, it could go in settings, but nowhere does it say it's muted.
I use this all the time for Zoom and it's never muted, so I don't understand what the deal is here.
Well, that's just.
That's just the low volume. I s- I still think maybe she should just do her spiel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I saw you indicated I should talk and you will listen. Thank you for making time for me. I apologize. I don't know what's wrong with the technology. But anyway, I want to tell you a little bit about the New York class program. It's been in existence since nineteen eighty-nine. It's a, um. Authorized for the state of New York. New York State municipalities, school districts, and fire organizations. We currently have about twelve hundred participants with over nine billion dollars worth of money invested in New York class. Everything we do has to be in accordance with New York State general municipal law. So, we can only do cooperatively as a group what you can do individually. This means that all deposits have to be fully collateralized in accordance with New York State general municipal law. And New York State is very restrictive as far as what we can invest in. It's basically bank deposits and US treasuries. We don't have any minimum balance requirements. We don't have any transaction fees. We allow for unlimited subaccounts so that way you can segregate your money. Maybe you have a general fund, a highway fund. And each subaccount earns their own interest, so it doesn't have to be prorated at the end of the month. Our interest is credited daily and paid daily. So, you don't have to worry about timing your depo- your withdrawals in order to maximize your interest. Our current daily yield is now four point eight eight percent. And before the call, I looked up to see our other participants in Clinton County. Besides the county itself, we have the town of Champlain, the town of Shazie, the town of Plattsburgh, the town of Saranac, the town of Dannemora, the town of Blackbrook. We have the fire district in Saranac. We have the OSIS account as well as their health insurance consortium and their workers' compensation consortium. We also have three school districts, Beadman Town, Shazie, and northeastern Clinton. So, the way it works is, um, money is transferred back and forth between New York class and your regular bank accounts utilizing either wires or ACHs. We have a cutoff of noon, so any transactions you would put through before noon are credited that day. Anything after noon is credited the following day. Wires are the same day and ACHs take an additional day. The fund is administered by public trust advisors out of Denver, Colorado, and they, um, manage a number of state pools. They're, um, licensed by the Securities and Exchange Commission. The fund is also rated by Standard and Poor's. It has a rating of A triple A, A triple A, excuse me, M, which is the highest rating available for government municipal pools. We also have a governing board of fifteen members that are elected by the participants. And right now, the lead participant is the village of Potsdam. We have a secure online portal where you're doing your transactions. You can also view your accounts twenty-four seven. Uh, you can post a transaction, it's up to a year in advance. So, that's handy if you know you're going on vacation and the money is gonna be needed while you're away to fund payrolls or your account's payables. We have a client services team that's available every day from eight AM to five PM to help with any issues you may have. So, I think I've covered just about anything, everything. Um, do you have questions? I don't know how we're gonna field questions, but I'll have to go to another screen, I think, to see, though.
Any questions? No questions? Do you have any questions, Joe?
We don't do wires.
I'm sure they would, you want me to say, want me to say that?
No.
Um, okay, so.
But you have a rule of transferring funds.
We're doing similar.
ACH. So, it's easy.
Any answer, though?
It's a, it's an automatic clearing case.
No questions, okay. So, if you are interested in joining. The, uh, board would have to approve a resolution. And then we have a registration packet that you would fill out indicating who the contacts would be and what level of privileges you'd like to give them. For instance, they could be read-only or they could be authorized to do transactions. And we would also need information about your bank accounts, so we would know which accounts we're moving money to and from.
Okay, all right.
Technology isn't working.
Yeah, I, it's okay.
But why don't you connect with me via email and we could talk about the next step?
Oh, she froze. Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Again, I thank you for your time and I apologize for the technology. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Oh, well, at least we can hear her, yeah, so that's good.
So, if we decide to do this, it would be the money that is sitting in the CD at Champlain National Bank that is due July.
Yeah, I think it was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. I wrote that down.
Yeah.
Yeah, in July, right.
So, that's the one that we would, that's the only actual money that we can.
Yeah, we can't take any money out of the TD bank because we're using that with.
No, we, we, we're doing, yeah, we get.
What about the reserve accounts we have?
Well.
That money is all in these funds. You know what I mean? All the money that we have, like our savings account, our checking account, and the CD, um, if you add all those up, that's gonna include what's in our checking, what's in our reserves.
Okay.
We don't have a separate account that says this is just for reserves.
But I, okay, so if we don't have separate reserve accounts. I guess I'm not following this. So, I thought we had reserve accounts set up, but that's just money that's meant for water project or sewer project.
We do. We have a reserve fund set up in our books, but we don't have a separate account for general and separate account for water and a separate account for sewer. And we don't have a separate account that says this is reserves.
It's divided on paper.
Yes, but it's.
But it's not divided by accounts at a.
Correct.
Financial institution.
Okay, should it be?
I don't think so.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm looking at, I'm looking at the interest rate going.
Well, we can't, we can't take, we can't take the extra money out of the TD bank account. We cannot do that. That needs to stay in there because it's covering other administrative costs that.
Yes, because now we have to. Now, we have to switch and we have to have, um.
Positive.
Positive pay. And we have to have E-Treasury, um, because of all the.
Account security.
Yeah, so we have to have those. So, in order to have all this and cover our, our costs, like our checks, deposits, whatever, should actually raise the rates so we make a little bit more, so it's gonna cover our costs of having that extra money in that one account that has been there for like.
So, what, what are they upping it to?
Um, she's upping the percentage, but it's only so it covers our costs there. Otherwise, we'll have fees every month. Cause you're, you're really only covered for so many checks. And when we do our, um, water and sewer billing, and we do, right now, we're doing taxes, um, all those, they count every check that you deposit, and we'd go way over.
So, by keeping the money at that bank.
Yeah.
We're getting, um, we're, we're making money and that money is applied directly to our costs to have the accounts.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to know what the percentage was.
Yeah, so I, I don't even remember what the percentage was, but.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
I know the costs were going to be over three hundred and twenty dollars per month.
Yeah.
Yes.
For, um, those different protections that we have to have.
So, but, but the money that's over in Champlain National is only earning like one percent. And that's at two hundred and fifty-nine.
Yeah, so that definitely could go into this.
There's this significant difference in interest rates.
Right? Huge, huge, yeah, there's no question about it, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, I look at that as, that's kinda like income.
It is income, yeah, it's revenue.
Yeah, so anyway.
So, that money could go there.
And that's what, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, and what I've, or, I.
And change.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly the whole amount, but anyway, but it's due, that one there is due in July.
Okay.
And so, at that point, then we have to make, yeah, either we roll it over.
Or we apply it to this new.
Or we, or we do, yeah.
So, how, how does, how's the board feel on this?
I say move it.
Okay.
I say move it.
All right.
So, so when she says that she needs an account that they're gonna be working with, so is this like we, they like link to this account? Is that what it is?
Yeah.
I would think so.
When I call her tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll have to ask her that question.
I'll be in on it and make it, so we know how it, how it works.
Yeah.
We'll have the routing number and the account number.
Yeah, because if, if she's gonna be moving money back and forth, we're gonna have to move to her.
Yeah.
At some point, we're gonna need to probably draw from that for something at some point. She's gonna need to know how to transfer things back and forth. Well, then we'll let it grow.
We can let it grow.
But she's still gonna need the banking for, for the cost.
Yes, yes.
It will be easier to tap it, though, if we need to.
Yes, yes.
What's that?
It will be easier to tap it if we need to, though, because it's not tied up in the CD.
Yes, so we need to figure out what, cause it's in a CD right now, so we'll have to figure out what we need to do and then, or information we need to get to them.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I'm sure she'll be very helpful with that, I mean, and it, it's, it's amazing when you sit and listen to
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
what entities are using this in the North Country, just in Clinton commu- uh, Clinton County.
Mm-hmm.
It's amazing. I think, I think it started way back when, before it was CV Tech. I think it started when it was the OSIS.
Okay. All right. Okay, great, so I'll reach out to her tomorrow and Mary won't need it and I will talk to her.
Do you need a motion to do this, or?
Um, I think we should have a motion, yeah, to join New York class.
I make a motion that we join New York class.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Anything you want me to share with her tomorrow?
So, is the, is the two forty-nine or two fifty, is that like the font of, number five, cause you're in different accounts? But is that the, the amount of money that we have that we're doing, investing with? Do we have other, we have other?
Yeah, well, we, we've had it over in that CD for quite some time now. But anyway, um, because it's, we, because we had too much money in TD bank. So, we started, we've divided some of it and that's where it ended up and that's where it stayed because we haven't moved it.
Do we have any other CDs that could be?
That's, we only have the one CD, yeah.
That's the only one?
And then the other one is that, the money that's over in TD that's just sitting there, but we need to keep that there in order to.
Okay. Okay, uh, roll call.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzog.
Aye.
Mayor McCutcheon.
Aye. All right, I need to go back to the report from the superintendent because Mike has a couple of, um.
You know that one from HAC, he doesn't, right, that's under five hundred dollars, isn't that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, he doesn't, he can just, yeah, that's, he doesn't need a, a, for that one.
What, what's that?
The HAC, the one that's for hundred and forty-six dollars. He can just order that. That's not, doesn't need approval for that. It's this one.
The blue, the blue one.
Yeah. That's like cleaning things, like he, when he orders those chemicals for.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, yeah.
Okay.
That one doesn't need.
But, um, but he does need, uh, so I'm reading, I'm gonna read this statement. Uh, we have a water meter at the softening plant that has a. Uh, we have a water meter at the softening plant that has a mechanical failure and it's causing alarms. Moisture collected in the electrical contacts, moisture collected in the electrical contacts and corroded them. So this meter needs to be replaced. I have supplied one quote for a direct replacement and I'm waiting for other quotes. We are working on getting a quote and the availability on a replacement head, which should be less expensive if available. Uh, I'm asking board to approve up to six thousand dollars for the replacement of flow meters. As of today, the lead time for a replacement meter would be August fourth. So I need a, a motion to, um, approve up to six thousand dollars for a flow meter.
I'll make a motion that we approve up to six thousand dollars for the flow meter.
Second. Any other discussion? Let's hope it's not all the way up to August.
Right, I kinda think that's just like an emergency purchase, I mean, Kevin showed us what it looked like too.
Yeah, I said, he sent me a picture too.
Mm-hmm.
So Mike said he's waiting on two other quotes, he's waiting on two other quotes from different companies?
Yeah, but he, yes.
Yes.
So it's.
So he said up to six thousand will be enough.
Right, so it's possible that if it comes in lower from another company or even around the same price from another company, but the lead time is much sooner. I'm assuming we'd
Go for it.
Go with a sooner, sooner, uh, delivery date.
Later.
Well, yeah, probably. I think though if we go up to six thousand and it's an emergency, if we end up having to change that, we would change.
I mean, but if he, if he purchases it from here, it's only fifty four hundred, so.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, but if, if one of these other ones come in and it's.
Yes. A little higher, but less time.
But less time, I don't, I don't think we really wanna be without that until August.
No.
No, we don't, we don't, are you, are you thinking that it would maybe be over six thousand, that we should have moved up to more than that?
No. No, I'm just, I'm just saying that if we get another quote, one of these other two quotes comes in.
And it's higher.
And it's higher than this, but we can get it the first of July.
And it's higher. Yes. We would go, we would go for it, yeah.
I would. Okay, that, that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, alright. Any other comments or questions? Roll call.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Patrick.
Aye. And then you're saying we don't, the, the sulfide test kit is just a normal expense, we don't have to print something?
No. Yeah.
Absolutely, no. It's only a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
He orders those other ones, those chlorine and the regenera- regenerate and, yeah.
Okay, alright, okay. Just don't wanna skip anything that they need.
No, no.
Okay. Alright. Uh, correspondence.
Correspondence from Clinton County Treasurer with Mortgage Tax Distribution. Uh, correspondence from Code Officer to Jonah Kirby regarding one 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 six seven Route Nine property. Correspondence from Attorney Renee to Barton Majudas. Correspondence from Alan Jovan requesting refund of service fees.
Okay. Um, new business, um, the, we have the dog law, the town of Champlain, uh, local law number three. I did send this to our lawyer to get some input. Um, it's very, very comprehensive. Our current dog law is very, very vague. Um, so we, we definitely need to tighten ours up. My concern on this is some of this information in their local law, and justifiably, uh, deals with like the licensing of the dogs that they do. I don't think we need to include that unless we write licensing of dogs is done under the local law number, whatever that was, number three of the town of Champlain. We don't need, this is all about how they license dogs and we don't license dogs.
Well, I, I know you and I have had conversations on this, but as I was reading through this again, I, I'm, I was leaning more towards, um, really making it more comprehensive like theirs, like we do need to have dog licensing in there.
But we don't do dog licensing.
Right, but if, if it's not in our policy, then.
No, we would write licensing of dogs and then is followed by, oh, I don't have the legal stuff.
Right.
Is followed by the law in the town of Champlain.
Right.
And it goes to them because we don't license dogs, so it's not appropriate that the village of Champlain writes about how to license dogs. We reference that law, that's already, will be on their books.
Yeah, just as long as we have something in there, because there's so many dogs that are out there.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a lot of that in this, where it's nothing that we do, it's all referencing town stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So if you have just saying, you know, per
Town.
Town of Champlain, local law, blah, blah, blah. I mean, you don't, you don't need, you know, ten pages of.
I. Right, but just with the amount of dog issues that we have had in the past year to two years, I wanna be sure that we're one hundred percent covered if something goes south with some of these dogs.
Well, I think we definitely need the restrictions.
Mm-hmm.
Absolute, we need the definitions, you always need definitions, and we actually have to add a number fourteen that says village dash village of Champlain. Uh, we have to have the restrictions, absolutely. Um, and we probably have to have that whole section on seizure of dogs, redemption, impoundment fees. We need the fees in there.
Yeah.
They should be consistent with the towns. Um, and probably, and the dangerous dogs too, which is.
Which has been an issue.
Which has been an issue, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, so what, what I did was I sent it to Tom Renee because I don't know legally how you, how you do it.
Right, right, I, I'm sure this isn't the first time it's done a dog law.
Oh, no, I'm sure not. Yeah.
But I just feel that we, we've had, in the past two years, we've had so many issues with dogs that.
I know it firsthand.
If it's not, if it's not in, if it's not in our, in our law,
No, pretended.
you can't just say, oh, fall back on the town law. You know what I'm saying?
Well, the problem right now, I, I mean, I think we could say that we've, we're following the town law, but the problem right now is our code, what's written right now.
Is vague.
Is so vague and practically useless.
Yeah.
Has no teeth in it, no pretended again.
If anybody wants to take us to task on that, they win.
Um. Yeah, so yes, we definitely have to adopt this, however it gets worded appropriately is, I guess what I would say. I, no, I'm not a lawyer.
And he'll send it back to us for review.
He'll send it back, yeah. Yeah, and then we have to have, what, a public hearing? As a local law, right, Mary?
Mm-hmm.
Then it has to go to codes.
And it has to go to codes, yeah.
Which is.
Yeah. It'll be expensive, but we, we have to do this, this has been a major problem. A dangerous problem.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll wait for Tom to get back, I'll contact him in a couple of weeks. So we make sure we have it for our next meeting. Okay, we did the New York class, amendment, amendment to the owner engineer agreements. Um, there's some changes on those agreements. I'm just going to, I didn't give you a copy of the, uh, the email from Anthony, I'm just going to quickly read that to you. Let's see here. Bear with me for a second. Okay. Uh, one is for the water project and one is for the sewer project, so let's see. I'm reading it number two. This is for water or sewer?
Two is one.
Two is water. Uh, this is an increase of ten thousand dollars. There is a decrease in verification of existing conditions as that task is complete and there were unused funds. So that's nice. There is an increase to the right of way assistance line as it has been exhausted and we are continuing our efforts to satisfy DOT. Also, there is a five thousand increase to the funding assistance line to continue with any project funding needs and the OYA grant application. So that's amendment number two. Could I have a motion to accept this?
Second.
You have a second?
Sure.
Any other discussion? Well, uh, roll call.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Um, Trusty Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Patrick.
Aye. And amendment number three. Uh, it is an increase of twenty four thousand nine hundred, this is an increase to construction administration line as it has been exhausted and construction is not yet complete. As you know, construction has taken longer than anticipated due to equipment delays, et cetera. However, construction has gone well with all contractors. There's currently a hundred and thirty five thousand in the contingency fund that will cover this increase. In addition to contingency, there is a hundred and thirty thousand remaining in Paris's field allowance and fifteen thousand in triangles. We have a motion to approve amendment number three.
So.
You have a second, sir? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trusty Tremblay.
Aye.
Trusty Malinsky.
Aye.
Trusty Connor.
Aye.
Trusty Herzak.
Aye.
Mayor Patrick.
Aye.
Um, pipeline is all done too.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Um, old business personnel policy. I'm gonna turn it over to you two.
Okay. So Nikki and I went through this policy page by page. The goal of the policy was to try to fix some discrepancies. Um, some things that wording needed to be changed, there was discrepancies between our personnel policy and the union contract. So we were trying to make them more in line. Um, so, I guess if you wanna jot some notes, we're, we're kinda, just kinda go through like o- only on the pages that we had changes to.
Yeah.
So like on page four, um, it's not crystal clear in the union contract. Probationary employ- employees, um, in our policy says are not paid for holidays. But there was an instance of a, of a person who was on probation who came back and said they were to be paid for their holidays. And we paid them, so we are changing that in the personnel policy to say that probationary employees are paid for holidays.
Okay.
And I think that when we do the union negotiations, we need to have them be crystal clear.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's things in there that just are not clear.
Or not in there.
Or not in there, so we need to have that be the same. Um, on page six. China, Nikki. And, oh, so this one was, um, they were optional holidays, I think is how they were listed.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, yeah.
And we had them changed to personal holidays, or personal time, personal days.
Yes.
Um, and that also the personal days must be requested with a forty eight hours notice except in emergency situation, so basically treating it the same as the vacation time, the same process.
Right.
No, actually, I think that, that changed to agree with the
With the union policy.
Yes, that's something that came up with the union negotiation that Kevin and I did.
Yeah.
Um.
The holidays stayed, well, the holidays stayed the same, but it was.
Yeah.
Personal days also.
Vacation, vacation time still requires two weeks.
Yeah.
Right. Notice, but this only requires forty eight hours notice.
Um, other thing that we've changed, there was a spot in here that said, in the policy that said employees hired after June first, twenty sixteen. Um, we, everyone here is after twenty sixteen, so there is no reason to have that in there, so.
Mm-hmm. Oh, true, right, the wording now.
It's, so we, we just took that wording out, there's no
Right.
no need for it. Um, another section under vacation, um, we changed it to be in line with, um, our fiscal year because it wasn't, the wording was not in line with fiscal year, it was calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
So we've now got it from June first. Vacation requisitions received between June first and July thirty first to be based on seniority. Requisitions received after July thirty first will be on a first come, first served basis. This way, things are things are all date lined the same.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's just, to me, it makes more sense that way. So. Uh, sick time. The union contract. Um, um, no employees will receive four hours sick time each month until the beginning of the village's next fiscal year. At that time, provided their probationary period has expired, they will receive six days, if their probationary period extends into the new fiscal year, they will receive nine days minus the number of hours they were credited each month. So we've, we've changed our, um, sick time policy to receive nine days per year.
Okay.
So that was, so they're in line. Health benefits was another one. The union can receive their health benefits. Are eligible for health insurance af- um, after two continuous months of service, they don't, they do not have to wait for their probationary period to be over. So we're changing that in our policy, it's not fair for our people to have to wait ninety days.
Correct, yeah.
So we changed that. And I think the last one. Oh, the last one was just, um, wording, um, still said Champlain.
Federal credit union.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So we just changed, it's a Danamaw.
Yeah.
So that's, did I miss anything, Mary?
No.
That's for changes, and then we added in discrimination and harassment policy.
Yes.
In page fifteen.
Yeah.
So it covers more than just sexual harassment.
Excellent.
Right, because really when, when Nikki and I, we met here one Saturday and we went through it and, and basically that sexual harassment and discrimination policy is, is just strictly sexual harassment.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really, it doesn't really cover anything else for any kind of harassment in the workplace.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there are lots of different kinds of harassment.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Other than sexual harassment, so that's a, I think that's a good addition to this policy.
Yeah.
And I thank Nikki for doing that, she came up with the, the wording on that.
Boy, great, great work.
That's it?
It's, takes a lot of work to go through two policies and.
Well.
But, yeah.
And, uh, I thank Mary, Mary started the ball rolling.
Yeah, thanks, Mary.
There's probably more stuff in there, but I was only focusing on the probationary stuff that didn't matter.
Yeah.
Right. And, and it, in, you know, we, we have, you know, we have a div- a division, not in a bad way, but we have the union employees and, and we have the office personnel and really, it's not fair to say you can have this after this amount of time or you can take this.
Oh, no.
And then our people are, our other people are sitting here going, oh, now I gotta wait three months before I can get help done.
Yeah, it's been a two tier system, it's not fair.
And it, it really doesn't, it shouldn't be.
Yeah.
So I thank Mary for going through and starting the ball rolling.
Yeah, thank you, Mary.
Changes that really needed to be made.
So I think we need a motion to approve these changes.
Hold on, a second.
You have a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? Just wanna say thanks again to, to both of you and to Mary.
Thank you, yeah.
Thanks, Nikki.
Thanks again, just for all the hard work on that.
Sorry.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Proposed, motion carries.
So everyone will get a new copy though?
Yeah, that, thank you.
Plus all the, all the employees as well.
Okay.
And then you sign.
Right. Um, I jotted in, um, I I updated the birthday celebration paper that I'd given you a couple of months ago, um, added a couple of things. I I mean, there are some question marks because I don't exactly know what we want to include in our welcome in our program, although I think we do need a program. So I would ask you to at least think about that, we still have plenty of time to pull that program together, but we do need to know what we're going to include in it. And, you know, are we sending out invitations like we did when we dedicated the gazebo, for example, you know, we have a really nice program. So, yeah.
And I think invitations to to the dignitaries that you're going to invite. I do know, and if you wanna add that to your list, Janet, that um, the town will will do it.
Of affirmations. Any other ideas about the welcome program? We'll keep thinking about it.
Is there a time?
I'm thinking it will be in the morning around ten or so, and I'm sort of planning it like we did the the gazebo run years ago. Um, it would be nice to have some music, I don't, maybe we could have this is a historic village, it's had a lot of military thing, I don't know if we could have a color guard, um, I I I don't know, but I'd like it to be really special. I'll always think about this all the time.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, she's really doing it, getting out and committed.
And they'll be in school then.
Yes, is that.
Yeah, they're older, they're too, yeah.
Mm-hmm, so they'll be practicing.
I'll reach out to her early, see what she thinks.
You could ma- I I don't know if you have anyone that's planning on doing the um if you're planning on doing the um oh my gosh. It'll come to you.
Okay, okay. Well, as you, you know, start mulling things over, just send me an email and say add this to the program. I would think it'll last maybe an hour, be nice to have a nice summary of the history of the village. Um, I'm sure the history center will also be open.
National myth.
Oh, yeah. Yes, definitely. Okay, great idea. Uh, Kim's got the music all set up, arranged.
We'll just need to know what times?
Yeah, we just have to know what times and uh rain location.
Mm-hmm.
Which we'll really have to, well, we are going to order a tent, but I'd rather the, I think the music needs to be inside if it's raining, so we'll have to figure out that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then Nikki, you and I can work on the kids' activities, I don't know if you want to rent anything, bouncy house, or if you, you know, if you just, if you wanna have crafts, if you wanna rent something, um, we could also use the space next to Falcon, the old Falcon store, that space for the kids' activities to happen, access to the meeting house for the bathroom. Um, we can get some inflatables or um, the the list of clubs and agencies, Chuck's come up with a very comprehensive list, I'm going to write the letter in a couple of weeks and we have that sent out. And those will be, we'll ring the playground like the trunk or treat idea, that fits a lot of tents in there. The KFC is working on the food, hot dogs, hamburgers, chips and soda drink, a drink. Um, Julie, you're gonna do the cornhole tournament, you talked about that briefly. Um, you know, we're gonna have to buy those, the cornhole thing, and I don't know, do you have, do we buy one set, do you buy two sets, like, I don't really know how the tournaments work.
Um.
I think it depends on the change in the timing of.
But we need to order those if we want to have.
I think we want at least two.
Yeah.
Two, I mean.
So.
Two.
We.
The tournament.
I went through Dick's not so long ago and they had they had a regulation board set for one thirty, it was on sale, but.
What's the board made of, though? Because the homemade one is, I think lumber, I'm wondering if it would hold up better. The local guy that makes the homemade ones.
Oh, I don't know, but just.
How much was the ones that you were looking at?
Just not. Was it one thirty?
I think they're one thirty.
One thirty.
Oh, same price.
Yeah.
Well, and that was a sale, it was forty dollars off every time, it was like a week ago, but we do have them there.
Oh.
And there were a couple of different ones, couple of different pricing.
And you. You can check Amazon, too, if you're a Prime member, you'd get free shipping.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have different size boards, just depends on how
Yeah.
the bigger the board, the further you can get away from it.
Well, isn't there a standard size and distance?
Yeah, it's like forty feet, I think.
Yeah.
But again, they have different sizes, so if you wanna have a smaller game, smaller boards.
You could have a kids', like a kid's match.
Like a kids' tournament.
Cause they, I doubt, I doubt they could throw forty feet. I have all I can do to make it forty feet.
I'm kinda wondering how I would do on forty feet too, but I don't wanna say anything.
I would say at least, at least two sets.
Yeah, I was, in my head, I was thinking at least two, um, and again, it would just be engaging on how many people we have, like, if we have a hundred people wanting to play
Maybe. Yeah.
how long are we playing to be there, cause you have two boards and there's a hundred people, that's fifty games.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Just to start, like fifty games first, then twenty-five, then twelve, and then.
Right.
Right.
Right, yeah.
That's a long one, so.
Yeah.
So it depends how many people we have that are interested in playing.
Well.
Well, we are gonna, we're going to have to get these sooner than later, I I'm just gonna put a plug in for local, someone local making them, just because it's a local person.
Yeah. Local, yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I mean, running about the same price.
Right.
And people do have them, if we need extras, people do have them, that you can probably borrow for the day.
It is their own sets, yes.
Okay.
I mean, we don't need three, four, five uh, sets of these, I mean, it's, I mean, how often would you use them? That many.
Well, you could use them at any summertime thing, cornhole.
You know, we use them village fest, we can.
I mean, sorry, village.
But I'm saying, you don't need the numbers. I mean, like, if you, you don't need five of them.
Yeah, no.
I mean, two, I think is plenty, and then if you need more, you.
Well, again, it's gonna depend on, it it probably wouldn't be a bad idea if if we knew people that had them, that we could borrow ahead of time for that weekend and have them like down there in case, oh, jeez,
Right.
we got a ton of people here, because you're gonna wanna get your two sets going, because then you're gonna start narrowing it down.
Yeah.
And if people have to stand there too long, let's face it, they're not gonna stand there.
Yeah, I mean, that's also what I was saying too, is like, you know, if you're, if the only two boards are there and then it's just only waiting for people to play, then you might sit there for three hours before you even get to play, and then you lose, and how fun is that? I'd rather have some where you can just kinda play casually, and then some are the like the tournament boards or whatever.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
And again, if you can get them cheaper, then just, you know, I guess we should just decide on how much money that we want to spend, and then we work within the budget that we set for ourselves.
Result, a hundred and thirty was the local one, I think, um, but that probably needs to be ordered.
Now, same, yeah.
Yeah. I I I think, I'd like to support someone locally, if we end up buying more and use Amazon or something, okay, or borrow them from people, that's fine, but why don't we agree to, I don't know, purchase two, I think, yeah.
At least two. I would think two sets to purchase at the start.
So you wanna make a motion on that?
So two sets, four total? Okay.
Yeah.
Is it a hundred and thirty for for one, or a hundred and fifty for for the set?
Really?
They're talking about two sets, four total.
You have two.
They have four boards.
Four boards, yeah.
Well, there's two for each set.
Two sets. Right, two sets, but it's four boards.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's just two sets.
Yeah.
So, so two sets?
Yeah.
Yeah, two sets, that, you you make a motion.
Well, I'm just making sure that when we come to the person, that we say we're looking for two sets, they don't just bring us, you know, two, so it's.
Do you remember, Juanita, what the details on ours?
I don't know.
Well, I think they they come in in two per.
No.
Not, not that I've seen, not that I've seen it going.
No, it's only been one.
Yeah.
Really?
So like what you saw at Dick's was one board for one thirty, or was it two?
I didn't see anything on Dick's, but yeah, I mean.
Um, I'll I'll find out in the meantime.
I thought they, I thought it was like horseshoes where you were, you have one set up and another set up.
You do, yeah, that's that's, but the ones that I had looked up, that were, came with one, it was just one, and then you had one or two if you wanted to do the two person, or, cause you can play one person at a time.
Well, we could order.
You know, one person, you throw them, and then you go back again.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a set.
Okay, so.
And the and the beanbags come with them. Correct.
No, I think you have to buy the set.
Well, they got your set.
I think so.
Oh, I can get beanbags.
It's like a six pack, though.
Yeah, they weren't very expensive either, no, I think you were looking at some point, or that, the sense of like, you get sex or something like that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't.
Is there a registration fee for this, or is it just a free?
Hey, John, I have a quick, I have a quick question.
Whatever we think, whatever.
Do you want to order prizes or rewards after?
Okay, so your cornholes, the hundred and thirty dollars, is that for two boards?
Yeah, I know, I was thinking of.
Three, even if what we said.
Five or ten dollars.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Yeah, just something that you want to play there.
Okay, cause I think, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's what I find myself.
Cause I think we're gonna get two sets, okay. I'll let, I'll let you know for sure, okay, thanks, yep, bye.
Okay.
Okay, it's a hundred and thirty dollars a set.
A set.
A set. A set. Which is two boards.
Two boards, yeah.
Okay, so the motion was to buy two sets.
Buy two sets of corns.
Sets.
Well.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, or right, and I can.
At, at a hundred and thirty dollars, for a set.
At a hundred and thirty for a set, yeah.
And I'll wait till the discussion.
Is there discussion?
Is that a set?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a set, but I was looking on Amazon, um, so I wanted to see how they sell them on Amazon, but they they have the beanbags, eight beanbags are fifteen bucks.
Yeah, cheap.
Okay, so I would say rather than doing all that sewing, cause that's going to be at least sixteen beanbags.
Yeah, that's what they said that it's, yeah.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, that. So we'll, we can order that.
Yeah, I would say just order that, I would just order those.
Okay. Okay. All right, any other discussion on this? I'm gonna challenge you all to a game.
Okie doke.
Well, do we have to know who are, no, or doesn't matter who we're purchasing from?
It's at the cost.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it matters, I mean.
So are we good? I see sets.
Why don't we, oh, we don't need these till September.
I'm gonna try to go with Dick's.
No, but it'd be nice to ha- have them even at Village Fest, you know, down in.
Yes.
Okay, but, okay, so we're gonna add this on our next one, or we're gonna add it to this one?
One.
Oh.
Wait.
One plus one thirty.
What, wait another month?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, the one is.
Okay, and I'll have him do a, a bell.
It's a bell.
Okay, um, so roll call.
Okay. Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Oh, wait, who made the motion?
Joel made the motion.
Joel.
I second, or Nikki second.
Okay. The this duo over here second.
Yeah, we we've been in it all the time.
Okay, trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mary McFetich.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so I do need um, a motion to close the regular meeting. Please.
So move.
So.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I need a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
A second, please, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and just bring, bring one, bring number four in correspondence. Please. I may have a motion to approve this request, please.
Somebody goes live, I have to discuss this.
Oh, yeah, that's right, may have a motion to go out of executive session, so move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, that motion carries, and a motion to go into regular session.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, may have a motion to approve this request.
I make a motion to approve a water credit in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Is there a second, does that end? Second by Nikki?
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other discussion? Roll call.
Trustee Chombley.
Aye.
Trustee Malinsky.
Aye.
Trustee Connor.
Aye.
Trustee Herzak.
Aye.
Mary McFetich.
Aye. Uh, if there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Oh, and don't forget to sign this form.